Second, 2018. Roll call, please.
Mr. Jones. Mrs. Keller.
Here.
Mr. Browning.
Here.
Mr. Rohr.
Here.
Mr. Hellinger.
Here.
Vice Mayor Schaefer.
Here.
Mayor Riggle.
Here.
Motion to excuse Councilman Keller.
Second.
Or motion, Councilman Jones. I would like to be excused also. I don't think it's fair that he is not here and I am. Sorry about that.
Ms. Keller, it's time for Mr. Schaefer. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Keller.
Mr. Browning.
Yes.
Mr. Rohr.
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer.
Yes.
Mayor Riggle.
Yes. And I'd like to know what's in her tea.
I don't know.
Tonight's dedication will be led by Pastor Deb Patterson from First Presbyterian Church, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. If you'll all please stand.
Let us pray. Mighty and gracious God, we thank you for the gift of this day. And we thank you for our community, for its desire to grow and become good neighbors with one another, for its ability to just draw people to its center and its being. We thank you for the leadership. We thank you for the police and fire departments and for all that care for this community. May all we do, oh God, be something that unites and builds us as a city together. All these things we ask in his name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, in the resolve with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Item four is the approval of motion summary of the regular meeting of council of January 8th, 2018, as recorded and transcribed.
For approval.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Schaefer. Second by Mrs. Keller. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Keller.
Yes.
Mr. Browning.
Yes.
Mr. Rohr.
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer.
Yes.
Mayor Riggle.
Yes. Motion carries. Item five is the consent agenda. Elaine, if you will please read this into the record.
Item A, acceptance of the motion summary of the Sister City Advisory Board meeting that was held on April 11th, 2017, and October 10th, 2017. Item B, acceptance of the motion summary of the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board meeting that was held on November 21st, 2017. Item C, acceptance of the motion summary of the Planning Commission meeting that was held on December 6th, 2017. Item D, Resolution Number 18-06, a resolution amending Resolution Number 18-04 appointing council members to various committees, commissions, and/or boards. Item E, Resolution Number 18-07, a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into an amendment of the security agreement arising out of the revolving loan fund, RLF, loan agreement with the VNP Hydraulics LLC for the purpose of purchasing land and machinery and equipment at 1700 Pittsburgh Drive. Item F, established February 12th, 2018, at 7:20 PM as a date and time for a public hearing and second reading for ordinance Number 18-04, in ordinance repealing and replacing Section 108.02 and Section 108.04 of the City of Delaware Administration Code establishing general rules and regulations for the disposition of personal property. Item G, established February 12th, 2018, at 7:25 PM as a date and time for a public hearing and second reading for ordinance Number 18-05, in ordinance for Fisher Homes for approval of a temporary sales trailer at the ravines at Olentangie, located on the north side of Curve Road, just east of Armstrong Road on property zone R3PMU, one family residential district with a planned mixed-use overlay.
Thank you.
Move for approval of the concern of them.
Second.
Before we do that, on item F, we scheduled that at 7:20, and G is at 7:25. That means Darren has five minutes to explain that all and get it done in time. Is that going to give you enough time?
Yes.
Okay.
And I just had one quick thing there. In item E, Councilman Hellinger had asked me earlier today regarding the outstanding loans for VNP Hydraulics. And they have paid off the one loan, which was $241,000. And the other one, there's an outstanding balance of $90,000. That's an original amount of $258,000. So, thank you.
Okay, so. So I had a motion by Mr. Schaefer. A second by Mr. Browning. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Keller.
Yes.
Mr. Browning.
Yes.
Mr. Rohr.
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer.
Yes.
Mayor Riggle.
Yes. Motion carries. Item six, it's time set aside for letters, petitions, or public comments for anything that is not on tonight's agenda. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to come forward at this time? Okay. Seeing none. We will move on to committee reports. Mrs. Keller, I have none. Mr. Browning.
Parks and Recreation looks like we'll have pickleball in 2019 sometime. And there was discussion about the soccer organization, Delaware Youth, Athletic Association. Thank you. And the YMCA will both carry soccer for as long as we care to have them. So they're both very good gentlemen.
Good. Mr. Rohr.
I have nothing.
Mr. Hellinger.
Nothing.
Mr. Schaefer.
Tuesday, February 6th, 7 o'clock, Public Works and Public Utilities Committee.
Good. Well, I had my first planning meeting, and it was very interesting. And I'm just going to leave it at that. At this time, I'm going to ask Brad to meet me down front. I thought we forgot you, didn't ya? Ha, ha, ha. You were helping. Whereas in the city of Delaware, the responsibility to recognize occasions of outstanding significance. And whereas Brad Staden will retire for January 2018 after 32 years with the City of Delaware in serving various positions in the Public Utilities Department. And whereas Brad cultivated his career by being promoted to the position of the Director of Public Works. And whereas Brad worked to update our water and wastewater treatment plants and the water distribution services for the citizens of Delaware, not least of which was the construction of the new water treatment plant and education center. Whereas Brad was an attentive manager that balanced the citizens' funds and needs throughout his career. Whereas Brad may have been soft-spoken, still is, but his mighty force towards the success of the Public Utilities Department is highly respected by his staff and colleagues as a true go-getter. Now therefore I, Carolyn K. Riggle, the mayor of the City of Delaware, do hereby issue this proclamation to honor Brad Staden in the City of Delaware and am joined by my fellow citizens in recognizing Brad's commitment to our city and to public service and wish him well in his retirement and many golf outings.
Really appreciate this resolution. It's been my honor to see the Delaware report. And I really do want to call out the city staff working for Tom and Dean and Jackie. They, me, and all the directors have been wonderful all the years. And without their support, I couldn't have. And the department couldn't have done what they did. So I truly feel blessed and honored for working for the city for the last three or two years. And I definitely will miss everybody here. So, thank you.
We will sorely miss you. Well, Brad, if you'd like to come back up.
Let me just, before Brad comes up, just real quickly, just echo the mayor's sentiments that were expressed in that proclamation for Brad's many years of dedicated service to this community. And we really are going to miss you and your quiet leadership over the years. It really resulted in a much better, well-improved water and wastewater system. It's things people really can't see, but we appreciate and we thank you for your service. Just real quickly, Brad, one of our objectives several months ago, when Brad announced his retirement, was that we would try to have somebody in place to at least overlap with his daily activities as director. And we were able to accomplish that by appointing Blake Jordan. Blake is with us this evening. And he started actually today. So Brad's last day is next Wednesday. So there's eight days, I think.
You just wrote all that in eight days?
Yeah, so it's a big task. But Brad has agreed to come back. We need him. Blake has him on speed dial, I'm sure. But anyway, I'm pleased to announce tonight, Blake Jordan is our new Public Utilities Director to replace Brad. And Blake comes to us from AECom, which is a large engineering consulting firm. And before that, he worked for Delaware County. He has roots here in the city. He's a longtime resident. His family lives here. And we're just pleased to have him. And I know he spent his first day on the job with Brad. Did you, I want to give Blake a minute here to say a few words.
He just don't want his time.
He made a great choice in Blake. And I know he hit the ground running today and with staff towards the facilities. And he got to experience some of the daily interaction that we have with citizens. So I think he's going to be a really great addition to the city. I'm carried by that. Hope he can turn us into the next opportunity to do additions we need to address.
I appreciate everybody's time. The staff have been very welcoming, and I can't appreciate that enough. Everybody's welcoming me with open arms. I am from Delaware, born and raised on K through 12 and Delaware City schools. Glad to be back, glad to be a contributing member to my home, to my city, and really excited for what the future brings here.
Welcome. You have big shoes to fill. Thank you. And next, we'll have a presentation by Sheila Hiddleston with the Delaware General Health District. Sheila, if you'll pull that microphone down in front of you before you start.
Or I could just use my soccer ball. Good evening, Mayor, council staff. And yes, Sheila Hiddleston, your health commissioner, stopping by to give you a little update on what's going on at the Health District. You all know Travis Irvin. He is one of our program managers, our lead epidemiologist. And he's our assigned staff member to the council. So he kind of keeps me up to date with what's going on. And then I know he's available to help you all with anything that the city is working on. Just going to give you a few little brief updates and then give Travis an opportunity to talk about our communicable disease update. It is flu season, and I wouldn't be your health commissioner if we didn't talk about flus. So the first thing I'd like to let you all know, and you may know part of this from interactions with Tom, the Delaware General Health District has been doing some facilities planning over the last year. We looked at not only our physical buildings, but also our staff and our customers and our clients and how we can serve them the best. We did offer to the board that we perhaps should look for a new location, hopefully within the city, but a new location, or at least do some major upgrades to the buildings that we are in. Our buildings are very, very old. If Dave Nolton, our Director of Operations and Finance, was here, he could tell you exactly how old. But suffice it to say, they're very old. What we have done after many, many, many months of study is determine that we are going to keep our primary location here on Winter Street. And so that is our plan. We are currently undergoing a facilities review with an architect to help us determine how we can best utilize the space that we have. You may or may not be aware that we have about 75 employees in this building. And that does not conclude or count any of the customers that we serve on a daily basis. And so our space is very, very limited. So we're going to try to see what we can do to make the most of that. We are also going to be opening up satellite offices, one over in the sun, down in either the Orange, Lewis Center, Powell, down in that area. We have the ability to do GIS mapping. And with our heat mapping, we know that those areas, we really do need to be able to serve those clients better. So we're in the process of looking for space. There is lots of space available at the south end of the county. So far, we have not come across an appropriate space over in the Sunbury area. So we're still working on that. But we'll let you know as soon as we're able to do that. Our hope is that we would be able to do full services there. And so our clients, who either for convenience, it's more convenient for them to come and visit with us there, or if they live in that area, it can be either or, we'll be able to serve them out of there. As we're looking at that space, we're also looking for meeting space. We cannot currently have a staff meeting with all of our staff in the location that we are currently. We just don't have any place big enough. So if we're able to find a location either in the Sunbury or down south area where we can have some meeting space, we'll be looking for that. Along with that decision to stay here comes the continued challenge of parking for our clients. I don't know how many of you are aware, but we have many young moms who come in for our WIC services or immunizations. And they're not carting just one little one. Sometimes they've got two or three. They have to park many blocks away. And so I did reach out to Mr. Holman to possibly see if one of our staff could be a part of your planning for parking, because I know that's always challenging and it's always something that comes up in the city. So however, we can work together. And also even just looking at that general parking lot that's behind us there on Franklin, anything that we can do to possibly help with some of that. We'd like to be involved in those conversations for the safety and the convenience of our clients. Excuse me. And I would be remiss if I didn't thank Tom publicly and also Sean Hughes for their work that they did do with us as we looked at the facilities and in our planning for the future. So we very much appreciate that partnership. And then lastly, related to ourselves, I guess, is just what we do at the Health District. Many of you know Joan Voe. Joan is our Director of Personal Health and Nursing. And she is retiring in March. We will have some sort of a celebration for her. But just so that you all are aware of that, because I know many of you have worked with Joan for many, many years. I don't believe she's been with the Health District for 32 years, but she has been with us for a long time. She actually was with the Health District when we moved into the location. And I think that that was at least 20 years ago now. So. The community health assessment, as an accredited health district, it is one of our responsibilities to do community health assessment. We have just finished the latest iteration of that and the Partnership for a Healthy Delaware County. We'll be beginning to look at all of that data and set our priorities for our next community health improvement plan, which will then go for the next three to five years. So that is in the process of looking at that. We will have data available specifically for you all for Delaware city residents as we begin to put out those tables. So if there's anything within that, if you're looking at grants and things, and some of those questions would be helpful, don't hesitate to reach out to us and we can get you that data. The District Advisory Council meeting, which Carol is mayor, I'm sorry, I should say mayor. Mayor Riggle is the attendee required by the ORC, although you certainly can appoint anyone that you want as long as it's reflected in your minutes, will be March 8th. That is a change you might remember from last year when you and Mr. Holman attended. We did make the decision to move that to a Thursday so that all of our subdivision partners can attend. It'll start at 16:00, 6:15, with some mild little refreshments. And then 6:45 will be the actual meeting. So we hope that one of you can attend that. We do have new schedules for our car seat inspections and also our breastfeeding support. So Travis will make sure that you all get those new calendars for 2018. One other thing, then I'm going to stop talking and let Travis talk. You all did talk a little bit about mosquito control last year in a couple of your council meetings. And I know Travis has reached out. As we begin planning for our next year, we would love an opportunity, if you all want to sit down and talk a little bit about what you believe that that looks like for the city and what we believe that that looks like for the city, we'd be happy to have those conversations. I just remind you that if we're going to make any changes or if you're going to propose some changes to the Board of Health, we'd want to start having those conversations fairly soon so that we don't end up in May when we start seeing a lot of mosquitoes and not have a plan if it's going to be anything different than next year. And then I'm going to let Travis talk a little bit about communicable disease.
So our big disease right now we're starting now is influenza. It's definitely going widespread throughout Ohio and the US and Delaware County. It was an early arriving flu season compared to those flu seasons. It's already hitting us December, January timeframe. I believe we're approaching about 70 cases of hospitalized people with influenza. And our norm for this time of year is about 25 to 30. So we're running pretty high numbers in that. Hopefully, that means it'll wean off quicker than most years. And you know, February, March, we're not seeing as many cases. Our flu messaging for prevention remains the same every season. Get your vaccine, wash your hands, soap and water. And if you're feeling ill, stay home. We did see some flu cases in long-term care facilities. And that's a special population that you want to keep as healthy as possible. Those senior citizens can get pretty severe illness with influenza. And so our staying off your sick message, really, we try and push to them. You know, anybody visiting that nursing home, if you've got a fever, not feeling well, staying home is the best choice for yourself, your family, and whoever you're visiting. So that remains our key messaging right now for the season.
We have had two deaths. They have not been pediatric deaths, which is what the state of Ohio tracks, but we track any deaths related to influenza. You should also all be receiving your Flu Friday updates. You might remember during the summer, we give you Mosquito Mondays. So now we're giving you Flu Fridays. And that does share with you our hospitalizations and any activity in these special populations. So just quickly, show of hands. Are you all receiving that? You should be getting that every Friday.
Every Friday.
Every Friday. Okay.
If they're not, they will.
Well, our public information officer is concerned that everyone, all our mailing list is not necessarily getting one of those. So if you're not getting one, please let Tom know. We'll make sure that you're added to that. They're going to spam folders. Because when I get my spam quarantine, they're all in the spam folder. I'm not sure that we can do anything about that. But if you'd like to set us as an appropriate, what do they call that? Not a vendor, an appropriate address. What we can do is I could send to Tom the address that it actually comes from. And maybe that would help so that you could do that. We do use MailChimp for that. So maybe it's in MailChimp. But I'd be happy to do that. You should also, we use the same method, have received your DAC, your District Advisory Council newsletter within the last week. So if you didn't get that, it might also have gone to your spam folder. We are required by the Ohio Revised Code to order, we give all of our subdivision partners an update about activities of the Health District, specifically a communicable disease report. And then our PIO, Tracy Whitaker, throws out the things that she believes will be of interest in there. So I will get that exact address, Tom, that those come from so you can get those out and you can set your mail up. Is there anything wrong in the city that we can work on with you? I know you have a timed thing and I need you to shut up.
When you, you said that you don't have enough room for having a meeting. How many, do you have your meetings during the day or in the evenings?
Well, typically, if we have an all-staff meeting, we do try to have those during the day. So we need a space for about 100 people. So we just quickly have to go off-site. We did utilize the Willis Building last spring when we tried to have one. Unfortunately, because of the timing and it was really hot, the auditorium was not conducive to a large meeting. So if we want to have an all-staff meeting where all staff can come at the same time, we just have to go off-site for those.
Call me later. 21 North Sandusky. They seat about 75 people and the building's not used that often. not used that often, so we can try to make arrangements. It's right down the street from you.
That would be nice. That's one of the reasons we tried the Willis Building, because we could only, we only had to shut down for a limited amount of time, as opposed to if I have to have staff drive. Because we do have the ability to use the Board of Elections, we use that building a lot. The Orange Board of DD, we use that building, but that means we have to close down the building. And I mean, we always have to close down the building if we truly want a long staff meeting, but at moments other than hours.
Give me a call so I can work out for you.
Okay, great.
Any other questions?
Okay, thank you so much.
Item 10 is consideration of a transfer of liquor permit. Elaine, if you'll please read this on the record.
Consideration of the transfer of our liquor permit from Scoreboard Pub and Grill LLC at 6 Troy Street, Delaware, Ohio 43015, to Scoreboard Pub and Grill 2017 LLC, doing business as Scoreboard Pub and Grill 6 Troy Road and Patio, Delaware, Ohio 43015, permit class D5.
Thank you. Just a question.
Madam Mayor, members of council, this is a transfer of a liquor license at the Scoreboard at 6 Troy Road. They're going to continue doing business as normal. It's just a transfer from one, from the majority partner to the minority partner, and he added another minority partner and became the majority partner. So it's just a slight change of ownership. Nothing with the business, nothing with the ownership that would substantiate any type of appeal.
Okay. What is the wish, council?
We would accept the liquor permit without the check.
Second.
Motion, Mr. Schaefer, second by Mrs. Keller. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Browning?
Yes.
Mr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle?
Yes, motion carries. Thank you. Item 11 is consideration of Resolution 18-08. Elaine, if you'll please read this on the record.
Resolution number 18-08, a resolution indicating what services the city of Delaware will provide to 89.618 plus or minus acres of land, more or less. Description and map are attached hereto as exhibits A and B for the annexation known as the Wilgus Annexation by Andrew P. Wecker, agent for the petitioners.
Thank you. Mr. Eflin?
Madam Mayor, members of council, this is as read by the clerk. It's the first step in the Ohio Revised Code annexation process for type 2 annexations. We're very familiar with that here in the city of Delaware, having quite a lot of land, at least since I've been here. But this is in the southwest quadrant of the community, just south of the airport, really in the area of our Business and Commerce Park along the future Sawmill Parkway corridor, just to the west of the Innovation Court development that has gone in recently. It's almost 90 acres, just shy of that. It's known as the Wilgus property to the current and the historic owners of the property. The applicants are here this evening. You have attached to your information a memo which contains summaries from all the departments who have reviewed this resolution of services request, and staff would recommend approval of this resolution. Again, this will now, after you act tonight, this will go back to the county for action and then come back to you for final action. It actually has to essentially sit on your table for a period of time, and then you can take up that action. I believe the intention of the applicant is to move forward with rezoning of the property, concur with or after that annotation process occurs, and that zoning to be, as we've conceived of it with them, consistent with the Innovation Court zoning for industrial and manufacturing commerce land. That's consistent with our comprehensive plan as well. So we would follow up with that process, obviously. Happy to answer any questions you might.
Questions?
I just want to point out that this is an important annexation, as Dave indicates. The Wilgus family has been very patient, I think. We've been very patient over the last several years about the development of that area. Tonight's really, as Dave indicated, just the first step in a fairly lengthy process, but it's an important one and allows us to take a look at, when you look at Sawmill Parkway ultimately going to Section Line Road, you can't help but notice, obviously, that it would go along that property frontage there. So obviously, that hopefully through, over time, with the development of that property, we might see perhaps the extension of that Parkway and what it provides us. But really, this is just another opportunity to expand the city's economic base. There aren't going to be rooftops there, I mean residential rooftops, there's going to be businesses there, and that's what we want. So we recommend council's favorable consideration tonight, and then you'll have another opportunity when the ordinance comes back to you to consider it again. At that point, we'll have a better idea of really kind of the development scenario that that piece of property provides.
So is applicants here? Would they like to come forward and say anything at this time?
Mayor.
You do have to come to the microphone. I apologize. But since you're here, I just thought you might want to.
I think, you know, the brief answer would be no, we don't have anything to add to what Dave Eflin's already provided to council, and that this rezoning, we anticipate would be consistent with the city's, you know, the surroundings in the city's economic development plan.
Okay. Elaine, do you know his name and address? Okay, that's all.
Thanks, Elaine.
What is the wish of council on this?
Move for the approval of Resolution 18-08.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Schaefer, second by Mr. Browning. Okay. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Browning?
Yes.
Mr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle?
Yes, motion carries. Item 11 is consideration of Resolution 18-09. Elaine, if you'll please read this on the record.
Resolution number 18-09, a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a joint venture agreement for the Delaware Entrepreneurial Center.
Well, they're, while they're coming forward, I just want to indicate that this, this effort tonight, really the next two items on the agenda, this item, and then the first reading of an ordinance authorizing the leasing of the building next door, really are key to address a priority of our residents that came out in our 2015 community-wide survey. And over half of our residents indicated at that time that economic development, creating new jobs, working with the businesses that are here, was a top priority. And for the last few years, following a retreat we had with city council in 2015, where we heard about the, the opportunities for co-working space, entrepreneurial centers, almost three years, two and a half years later, we're happy to place before you two very, very significant items that will increase the economic, economic opportunity for, for not only our residents, but residents countywide. So with that, Sean Hughes, our economics development director.
I can talk loudly, though. You know that.
Madam Mayor, members of council, good evening. Thank you very much for the introduction, Tom. I think that was spot on. I think if you remember back in 2014, when we released a first study to all of you in a, in a council retreat in regards to how important entrepreneurialism is to the development of opportunities for white-collar job creation, especially job creation in general. But as we look at that, that survey that was done, well, it was actually, I think, at least a year after we did that study, from the citizens in regards to what's important to them in the community, and they came back and said, you know, we want, we want job creation, we want economic development, but they also really want the jobs that they need and that they work in now to be here in the city. As you know, over the last, course of the last several years, we've evaluated multiple, not only models for, for how an entrepreneurial center works, but also different facilities. We started with Gazette Building next door, which we'll be talking about here very shortly, and then we moved on to the, the city school building over here, next, next to downtown here, and shortly after, through our relationship with the university, had a great conversation about the use of the Stewart Annex Building, which is the building we'll be speaking about today. And ultimately, through the relationship that we had with the university, the relationship with the county, this building made much more sense to us to move forward with this project for several reasons. It was in our downtown. It was economically viable. It was in a key location for the university, as well as the city and the county, and all of our businesses to, to, to access it. Therefore, we intensely, intensely went into a study in regards to how that facility could be utilized. And with that, I'll turn it over to Megan and Dan here, who I've been working with since 2014, I guess, in regards to this project.
Thank you for the opportunity to share more about this center. I'm Megan Ellis, the administrative director at the Walthamati Center of Ohio Wesleyan University. This space is being designed to help bridge the community and the university. It will be a center that ignites creativity with all who walk in, our students and our community members, our startups, those who will go on to create new businesses in the area. It will include educational space, areas for networking, and also engagement. There will be included larger offices for startups who are kind of farther along in the process, as well as community space for open working and shared spaces.
Great. And my name is Dan Charner. I'm an assistant professor of economics at Ohio Wesleyan and focused really on entrepreneurship, so that's where I come in. We had a feasibility study done by Zach Price Triad Architects. I think some of, I saw it earlier, the renderings are there.
Yeah, we can put those up. I think we've got them.
And so, you know, based on that, we decided I'll move forward. Currently, we're working with a company called Thomas &amp; Marker Construction, who's done a lot of work at Ohio Wesleyan. We have a great relationship with them. And, and so we're going to be working with them to make sure that we bring the project in according to the budget that was presented, and, and we're really excited about actually working with them next on Thursday. The government, governance of this is based on two people from the city of Delaware, either the city manager or his or her designate, and then the economic development officer. The county will have two people, the president of the board of the county commissioners, or his or her delegate or designate, and the economic development officer from the county. The Ohio Wesleyan will have two people, the president of the university and another individual that the president designates, and then finally, a member at large from the entrepreneurial community of Delaware that the other six would vote on. Then we'll also have an operations committee. So the daily operations of the center would be handled by the economic development officer of the city, who is going to be onsite on a daily basis. The county economic development officer, who will not have desk space, but will rove in and out as he or she deems necessary. And then Megan from the Walthamati Center would have her space there, and therefore will have coverage, you know, all the time to welcome, you know, our people and so on. Along with that, the CFO from Ohio Wesleyan will be on that operations committee, and then the business faculty of the university that focuses on entrepreneurship, I guess that would be me to start, would be the last person. Of course, we would all be there to make sure that the center was running appropriately, that we were meeting our budgets, and that we were making sure that the results, including programming, were being met. So.
The agreement that was in your packet that we submitted on Friday, that was a draft, the final version, or near final, there's a couple items that we'll be working on still, is actually in front of you. It was put on your, your place there before the meeting. There also is a sheet there that explains the differences that you'll find between the draft that was submitted on Friday with the, the final that was submitted today. So just for your reference, a lot of those items had pertain to the relationship with the county and the entrepreneur center. A couple items are also city and county.
Maybe you could just review really kind of how business model works in terms of the, the actual center itself. I think that would be helpful.
If, as of right now, and obviously subject to change, there's four spaces that are planned for, you know, leased to businesses that want private offices. There'll be then roving spaces that people could come in and use on a full-time basis, and then we'll have, you know, part-time kind of roving spaces. We'll also have, you know, the facilities that will be able to be used for rental, for any type of conference, you know, where they need maybe a private space to work. Of course, all of the, all of the facilities of Ohio Wesleyan are at their discretion if they're part of that. So if they needed to make a video, as an example, how Wesleyan has facilities, we have a great duplicating department. If they wanted to do pitch books or anything like that, we can do all that at Ohio Wesleyan. Their, our IT support will be available for them, and so that's all part of the package. So we think we can, you know, garner a lot of support that way.
And something that really makes this center different is the partnership with the university, the access to students. We'll have our fellows working hands-on with these startups, working on marketing plans, helping with the accounting side of things, helping with design. So it's interdisciplinary, really plugging into our liberal arts roots at Ohio Wesleyan, and then engaging those students throughout the time, and then the educational piece of bringing in different experts, helping our, our community learn more about starting their own business and taking it from there.
I will add that due to the unparalleled collaborative nature of this project, a much larger economic项目project has started working with us for the opportunity to make use of this facility in a greater way that would bring significant jobs and payroll to the city of Delaware, as well as offer outstanding opportunities for the university and its students to learn onsite. So we're all very excited about that possibility. And it is just a possibility right now, but it's a possibility that would not have happened if we hadn't started down this path together.
When is the anticipated date opening?
The start of this coming academic year.
Oh, good.
End of August.
And I remember reading a study that Ohio Wesleyan has a certain percentage of student or graduates that go on to be entrepreneurs. What is that number? Because I think it's really high.
Yes. We were ranked 17th out of nationally, universities studied for entrepreneurial studies and careers in life.
So when they graduate, let's get, let's have them start a business here and stay here in Dallas.
And stay here. That's right. That's what it works.
We've already had two students pitch to Delaware Dawes, and the kids are doing that program, and I have to say, I, they're amazing. The, the ability to take their liberal arts education and really put that towards something that can create a career for themselves, but, but also others, is just, it's, it's been outstanding. It's amazed me. I've been very impressed. These are, these are kids that I could see starting a business tomorrow in, in the city of Delaware. It's just fantastic.
Any other questions, the council?
Well, so I have a concern about the information that was provided in our packet isn't, I don't have time to read this right now.
Right. And I, we recognize that if you'd like to, if you'd like to go to another reading, that's, that's, that's fine. A lot of these changes came back from the county, Delaware County, because they're a signatory to the agreement, and we had a chance to look them over earlier. They're not real, they're not substantive, but, but I do recognize that, that you just received them this evening. And I would expect, you know, I would expect favorable consideration, council, but I also recognize that you just got these. So if you want us to, if you want to take a chance, have an opportunity to review those, that's fine.
Is there a version that shows what was changed in a different color, or?
That's what we were trying to get earlier. We didn't have the word version of that, so.
The, the, I'm sorry, the best we could do is shorten this, was give you a long sheet summary, two sheets summary. And thanks to Elaine for helping to assemble that quickly. But if people like, we can try to figure out a way to colorize a version to show.
Yeah.
It, it may also be helpful if council's interested in taking the time. As city manager Holman said, we did look at these in advance. I think it might be faster if Sean just walked through them, because they really are, it looks like a lot of words, but they really are pretty inconsequential. You certainly can go to another reading, but there's nothing in here that's really that interesting. But I felt that it was important to make it clear that the draft you looked at was going to be different than what we might be passing. But I think Sean's put a lot of work into figuring out what the changes are. If you give him a few minutes, I think you might be able to address your concerns, because you're right, Councilwoman Keller, there's a lot to read here, but it doesn't boil down to mush. That's totally up to council.
It's really up to, I mean, I don't want to put, you know, you on the, if it's, if you want to go to another reading.
I shouldn't be the only one that.
Do you want Sean to explain it all, or do you want to go to another reading and read the, read it again? I see the address was wrong right off the bat, but I don't know everything else yet.
Just, I'm going to abstain from this because it involves the county, but other than that.
I'll go for another reading.
Are you okay with that?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
There's nothing time-sensitive about this. Well, I mean, they want to get going. I mean, they want to get going, but, yeah, it's not.
Well, the time-sensitive would be whether we can open it when the academic year starts. Your next council meeting would be?
The 12th.
Two weeks.
Yeah.
Two weeks.
So, so we'll go to another reading then. Thank you.
Thanks.
Forgot to mention President James is back.
Did you want to add anything? Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to item 13, which is consideration of ordinance 18-02. If you'll please read this on the record.
Ordinance number 18-02, an ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into a lease with Delaware Community Space LLC for a high-end co-working space in the City Hall Annex located 18 East William Street.
Thank you. Mr. Hughes?
See, I didn't go anywhere. I'm still here. As I mentioned, we'll be coming back to the Delaware Gazette Building. We've spoken about this, I think, at several council meetings, so I won't go into a, a long dialogue about the project itself, but I think what we have here is a culmination of several months of negotiation on a lease for Cohatch to utilize the Delaware Gazette Building, not only utilize, but a, a way for, for us to work together to renovate this building in such a way that it makes it usable, presentable to, to them and their customers, but also allows us in the future to be able to utilize the second floor of the building for future office space for the city. We'll get into incentives at the, the next council meeting. We'll be bringing forward a CRA abatement proposal for the building. At this point, we wanted to make sure we got the lease in front of you that allowed us to move everything else forward. The lease itself is, is a very fair lease that I think is, has market rate rents, and it has a, a great solid platform for, for, again, renovating the building, putting it in a good vanilla box state that then Mr. Davis back here, which if Mr. Davis would like to say anything, he's welcome to, can then put it into a branded state that he can run his business out of.
Really, and this, this project is, as Sean indicate, has indicated, is we've been, we started our conversations with, with Matt Davis last year about a co-working space, and we've looked at a lot of options for financing the project, for how the project gets actually constructed, and how that building gets remodeled, and have come back to really the city kind of taking the lead in that. We had, at one point, considered the finance authority, but for a number of reasons, have decided that it probably makes sense for us to, to, to take the lead. And really what it allows is we're facilitating the redevelopment of a city asset that ultimately we, we deemed is appropriate to have for the city and for city hall space. We hope to be able to come back to you with a plan that shows how that second floor can be utilized in a productive way for the city. We really, right now, don't have the need for all of the space on that first floor. That's why it makes sense to provide this, this opportunity for Cohatch. But we do have increasingly a need for more meeting space. At any given time, we've got meetings going on here in city council chambers. We're overflowed in the manager's conference room. So that kind of space, we can, will, will come in handy over here with the, with the Delaware Gazette Building. So as part of that project, we're looking at at least the first phase of getting the connection built to that building over there. Whether we have the resources to fully fit it out, we'll have to see. But we're going to do as much as we can to improve that asset for the city for its ultimate, its ultimate use. And, you know, Matt Davis has stepped forward. I know a number of you have been able to see his facilities in, in Worthington. He recently opened the new space of the old Worthington Library, and has, that's fully leased, I believe, and I think is excited about being able to make this, make this project work here in Delaware. So, and I know he's here. Matt, did you want to come forward and at least say hello again? What you hope to accomplish?
Sure.
And how this can coexist with our Entrepreneurial Center?
Good evening, everybody. No, I just look forward to the opportunity to move to the next phase. I think the project beforehand is exciting also and very much complementary to what we do. I view our customer base and our services as different than what they do. We add a lot other services besides just co-working here for offices, we have 40-plus off, 35 to 40 offices, social memberships of the public, as well as other full-time small businesses to be utilizing the space. And we like to phase two startups, so once they get passed through the Entrepreneurial Center and they get funded, then they move over to start running their company in different type of offices. We have real, real companies, real branded, branding agencies, accountants, lawyers, et cetera, that help accelerate the process. So we view ourselves more of a phase two accelerator than we are an incubator. And we also provide a lot of other amenities for the community that aren't just entrepreneurs, just people who want to hang out, enjoy the, enjoy the facilities and things like that. So we think it's a great use of the space, and we look forward to hopefully getting past this phase and on to the next one, building something.
Okay. Thank you. Well, this is the first reading. It's been recommended to take it to a second reading.
And I'm assuming if this says draft, but there won't be any other changes other than dates when we get the next one, so we don't have to go to another reading? Is that correct?
That's my hope.
Okay. Well, it is lengthy, and I just want to go through the same thing in two weeks.
We, if it helps it, I'm ready to sign it. No changes on my side.
Lengths.
He offered to sign it in advance and had to sign a copy in front.
When we do our addresses, you may recall, we would do it in red and send it out in advance. I think with the earlier item, we got it from somebody else, and we always try to make sure you can see what happened earlier.
Okay. All righty. Any questions for Sean or Matt? All right, thank you.
No question. Okay.
Oh, did you have a question?
No.
Okay, we'll move on to...
I'm still here.
We'll move on to item 14, which is consideration of ordinance number 18-03. Elaine, if you'll please read this to the record.
Ordinance number 18-03, an ordinance approving a community reinvestment area agreement with Wolfrem Roofing and Exteriors LLC in the city of Delaware for investment in real property improvements on a building at 132 Johnson Drive and declaring an emergency. Emergency clause of this ordinance is hereby declared to be an emergency measure necessary to provide for the public, peace, safety, health, and welfare of the city, and is necessary to finalize negotiations, and as such will be in full force and effect immediately upon its passage.
Thank you. Mr. Hughes?
And Madam Mayor, members of council, what we have before you with this ordinance is the opportunity for the city of Delaware to partner with one of Central Ohio's fastest growing companies. I think you're recently named top 50 in Central Ohio here by Business First in the last year, actually two years in a row. So this is, this is a company that's really grown in our city, went from a very small space. I remember the first time I met with these guys, they were over there in Gruber, you know, sharing space with 2K, and then bought the building that EMS actually abandoned when we helped that company expand. So you can see how these things are all tied together, how economic development is circular. But now they're growing again, and that, that building needs to grow with and for their company. This is, this CRA is an opportunity to help them, assist them with that expansion. What they're looking at is an 8,000 square foot expansion on the building, which it basically roughly makes, I think, what, 21,000, 20,000 square foot or something of that nature. This is a pretty decent sized building at that point. It was on the smaller side. That's about a $600,000 investment in the building with the expansion and some work that needs to be done to the inside. What they would be committing to as part of that expansion and this proposed CRA is creation of five new full-time positions within the city limits. There will be many more positions coming out of those, but those are field positions that wouldn't necessarily be taxed here within the city. Those five positions would have approximately $400,000 commitment payroll. So you can do the math there, where each of those folks is making, it's decent. They would retain their current 55 full-time equivalent employees with a $946,806 payroll. For that, what we're proposing is a 50% tax abatement for 50 years. That would give them 15. I'm sorry, what did I say, 50? Man, he was excited about that for a moment, 50 years. Yeah. It's beyond the building's life. No, just kidding. That would be about a $91,852 savings on this project over the course of that time. Payroll wise, and because it's a 50% abatement, there is no recommended school pilot payment structure in this. The schools were fine with that. This would approximate a 50.77% return on investment for the city, and it would give the schools about 36.61% more tax revenue with that 50% abatement. Marty, is there anything? I'd like to introduce Marty Klein, who is with Wolfrem Roofing and Exteriors.
Thanks. I just want to thank you, Sean, for putting this together for us. I can't express how fast we're growing. When we moved to Delaware in 2012, there was three of us in the office. When we bought the property at 132, we thought we'd be here forever, decades, we'd be, plenty of space. Right now, we have 15 offices and we have people double up them. It's that fast. And really, we feel that our biggest impediment to our business growth is labor, whether it be blue collar labor or all the way up to highest levels of management. We need people and we need spaces to put these people in. With, you know, our payroll the way it is, we feel that we have probably captured only half of what we could handle in this market without having to look outside of the Central Ohio market. So with that type of growth continuous, it's right on top of each other. We've already gotten wins in for permitting. We're looking to make this happen as fast as we can to capture that market.
Well, thank you for choosing Delaware.
Yeah, this was a personal level too, because I work like two miles from the house. So we've got to keep it here, guys.
Any questions? Any motions? Are we taking this to another reading?
We were asking for an emergency on this so that they can, they already have plans submitted, their plans zoning, and are on their way towards construction.
Yeah, we're trying to get this ground broken in the instance of what it breaks. Well, it's coming back, sorry.
And move to suspend the rules requiring three readings on ordinance 18-03.
Second.
Have a motion, Mrs. Keller, second by Mr. Schaefer. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Keller? Yes. Mr. Browning?
Yes.
Mr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer. Move to enact the emergency clause on ordinance 18-03.
Second.
Motion, Mrs. Keller, second by Mr. Schaefer. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Keller? Yes. Mr. Browning?
Yes.
Mr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer?
Yes.
Mayor Riddle?
Yes.
Move for approval of 18-03.
Second.
Motion, Mrs. Keller, second by Mr. Schaefer. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Keller? Yes. Mr. Browning?
Yes.
Mr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer?
Yes.
Mayor Riddle?
Yes. Motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you, appreciate it.
And item 15 is consideration of ordinance number 18-04. Elaine, if you'll please read this into the record.
Ordinance number 18-04, ordinance repealing and replacing code sections 108.02 and 108.04 of the city of Delaware's administrative code establishing general rules and regulations for the disposition of personal property.
Mr. Scholman, I thought, you know, Sean was just going to keep going.
Sean loves selling unneeded personal property. Madam Mayor, members of council, you asked if five minutes would be enough for the public hearing, and I'm pretty confident that it will be, but I will give you a little bit of an overview now, so you don't have to have as much then. This is, basically, we have a section that allows us to sell personal property that it doesn't need for everything. We can't just give it to our friends, we have to do it in an open fashion. Personal property is basically anything but land, real property. So it can be the cars, it could be equipment, it could be computers, things like that, desks. Right now, our ordinance is at $5,000 is the limit where we can sell it with the city manager and the finance director's approval. I think over $5,000 comes before you, and you get these weird kind of things, like, hey, we want to sell a truck because we think it's doing more than $5,000. And what this does is raise that limit to $10,000, basically because $5,000 is not much anymore. And it also combines sections in a cleanup fashion because we had this section talking about selling, and then we had a separate section saying, oh, yeah, we can also, on an eBay-like thing that we use called GovDeals. So we're trying to smoosh them together and basically say, we can sell things up to $10,000 without coming to council. In that same section, one of the methods we can use is an electronic auction site that's open to the public. So basically, we're taking a section down one and we're raising the limit. I'd be happy to answer any questions, and I believe Bill is here. Did I do it service?
Any questions?
I was going to say, I had a comment here when I talked to Tom earlier today and we were discussing this. Would it be possible to index this and put this in with our, like, our fee schedules, you know, that go up each year, whatever? Because this is, this is, what, from '87, I think, is?
Yeah, it's really...
What this was?
Yes, sir.
And I went out there and looked and, you know, looked at the value of an $87 today and what have you, and it comes out to be like $10,750. It's what, $5,087? Yes. And, you know, so even if we made it 10, it'd be less buying power than what the original ordinance was. And that just means we're going to have to come back and relook at this five years from now. It's, ah, maybe it needs to be $14,000. And if we could just, I don't know if it's possible to index it, but that way then, you know, index it to the CPI or whatever, and that way then we don't have to worry about leapfrogging every however many years.
So unlike salaries, which are an expenditure of council, which we can't buy in future councils to raise those up, this is just a code section. So we could either index it, I had to figure out a way to make sure that the number is easy to find because the code would move, or we could, your other suggestion was to link it to our fee ordinance, and we'll look at it every year and see if we need to adjust it. Both of those are opportunities, I think, what I'll do is we'll get with Bill and Chris. The reason, and it's totally up to council, because what you're doing is you're giving up some control. And if you're comfortable doing that, then we certainly can. We didn't want to come in and tell, could be a million dollars if you wanted. But we're trying to get a number where above that, council really wants to, and below that, you don't really care. So there's no magic number to the 10, although it sounds like Bill was pretty close when you did your CPI. So what I would propose is Bill and I and Chris will maybe huddle up this week, and you might see a slight revision in the next draft that comes before council, but it would be included in the packet so you could see it. Or we could do it as an option, so you can weigh in on how you like the way it looks.
I was interested in inflation. I wonder if the dollar amount was too low. That's what I was, I don't deal with front motors very often, but it's, it's in the cost of things.
Yeah, if you want, and the other problem we were having with the 5,000 was where sometimes we thought it would go less than 5,000 because maybe the Kelley Blue Book is 3,000, but then people bid it up at the auction. So we're in this weird position of we're happy to have more money for the taxpayers, but it makes it look like we underestimated it. So that's one, another reason why we're raising it, and it could be another reason why it might be good to keep, keep that going with inflation.
Okay. So this will come back in two weeks, the next meeting. Sitting, oops. Yeah, ordinance number? Ordinance number 18-05? Elaine, if you'll please read this into the record.
Ordinance number 18-05, an ordinance for Fisher Homes for approval of a temporary sales trailer at the ravines at Olentangie located, located on the north side of Curve Road, just east of Armstrong Road on property zone R3 PMU, one family residential district with a planned mixed-use overlay.
Madam Mayor, members of council, this is the first reading earlier tonight. You set the public hearing for your next meeting, and we'll do a full presentation. And it's essentially for a model home trailer, which we don't have a lot. We haven't had one in my tenure here in the city, but it's allowed under code, so.
Bring that back to you.
Thank you. City manager's report?
A couple of items. I attended the keynote address at the climate change summit this past Saturday, saw a number of Delaware residents there, and our sustainability coordinator, watershed coordinator was there as well. There's going to be a lot of reporting out from that. Hopefully, we'll get, at some point, get a presentation by some of the folks who were at that conference. I know Marion Gable has asked to come before city council again, and others, just to talk about climate change and how that impacts local governments and what we can be doing to address that. You heard from council member Browning about the DIAA that seems to have gotten worked out, I think. Jackie was at that meeting last week at the Parks Board, and that, I think, is very fortunate. Now, we have, we have had and will continue to have options in the community besides DIAA. DIAA has done it, continues, has done and continues to do a great job, but there is a role for the YMCA in terms of rec soccer, and I think that was expressed to the, to the Parks Board. The, we're looking at a finance committee meeting, so Elaine will be reaching out to the finance committee members to get a meeting in the next probably four to six, probably the next four weeks or so. And our joint meeting with the Delaware County Commissioners, initially, we thought it was going to be in that March, I think it was that March 1st date, and that didn't work out. So we're back to the, one of the other dates they gave us, which gives you kind of three meetings within a space of, I think, 10 days. So, but I believe five of you have said, okay, I know Chris is going to be out of town, and with your pleasure, we could, we can do it at another date if this one doesn't work, but that was one of the other days they gave us. So we'd have a retreat on the 10th, a meeting on the 12th, and then another meeting on the 15th.
I'm okay with being a maybe with 75% chance, I'm okay, but...
I think that's, that's fine.
You're talking about the 15th?
The February 15th.
I didn't want to hold the rest of the group up if they could do that. I'm trying to make it work. Yes.
We understand how it's challenging trying to get all seven and then three county commissioners on a date that everybody can make. So I think we're doing pretty well. Then also, as far as the retreat, I had sent out a couple of weeks ago in my bi-weekly report just some suggested topics for that, and it is taking shape in terms of the agenda. We are looking at, and I had a conversation with Dave Eflin and his team about the comprehensive plan, and spending a little bit of time at the beginning of the retreat, talking about the comprehensive plan, how it's being approached, and council's role in that process. And that's one of the items. Another item would be the, we need feedback, and we need input from city council regarding stakeholder research and engagement, public engagement with regards to transportation. So that would be another topic. And then the last item is, we need council's direction, and we need your direction on the impact fee report that we put together last year. So that will be a report on that. So we're trying to give you items, where there's some conversation, and trying to get some direction back from you as to how we approach these. So that's three items. I know Councilman Jones had talked about economic development. I'm not sure we're going to have enough time, and I think there was some discussion with the mayor and vice mayor about maybe having a separate work session for that. That's three, those are three...
Not right away.
Yeah. Those are pretty, three substantive items. We're having it at Ohio Wesleyan in the morning. There'll probably be a lunch that would follow, and then just to wrap up. So we'd hope to start around 8:30 or 9:00, have you out by probably 12:30 or 1:00. So, but if there's any other, other items that you'd like discussed, let the mayor, let the mayor know.
Okay. I'm just suggesting, when we're thinking about putting work sessions on, it's a whole lot easier when we're ending a meeting at 8:10 to just say, everybody take a break for five minutes and come in, and we'll work until 9:00 or 9:15, as opposed to setting up a whole separate meeting, taking a whole other night, but...
Well, this particular meeting that I'm thinking of, I would like to bring in the port authority, so that we all understand what tools they have and how they benefit businesses. I just, I think that's really important that we all understand it totally. So I want to do a whole work session just on that, nothing else. So...
Yeah, I think unfortunately with, if we try and use a, kind of plug a gap for something, then we can do that as long as we have whatever the prerequisite information is prior to, you know, maybe we don't need a third party, but if we're talking about regionalizing the airport, we need to have that information before us, before we can sit down and say, okay, take a break, or we're going to come back and talk about it.
Just making the suggestion, when it makes sense that we, you know, very often end a meeting early, so. But if you want to bring in the port authority, it doesn't make sense in this.
And then just real quickly, Dick Jackson, local resident, has started a group called One People. You may have read about it in the Delaware Gazette on Saturday. If you haven't, please do. It's really an effort to just involve the community in a conversation about race and our African-American community here in Delaware. And he's actually made an outreach, I think he's talked to our chief of police today about the effort overlap with the Delaware Coalition. And that is something that, there'll be more conversation about, but there's a kickoff meeting with that group, I think, this Thursday. And so that is something that you might just take a look at if you have the time. You can follow up with Mr. Jackson. You can follow up with Mr. Jackson, and I'll be out of the office on Friday afternoon through Sunday.
Okay. Council comments? We'll start with Lisa.
Would it be possible for us to get an updated list of boards and commission appointments? Just the final after the changes that were made?
After tonight, yes. Yes, because we amend, yes.
Because I don't, I'm getting confused myself about what changes were made. Okay. And I really like the calendar. This looks different than it used to look, and it's easier to read, and I like it, so thank you. That's it?
Okay.
Just the only thing is, and Lisa kind of poked me here before the meeting, but to bring back up the whole idea of the bag and what we want to do potentially with addressing the littering of...
My whole street is...
Dispatch printing bag.
Full.
Yeah.
Now that the snow's gone...
Now that the snow melted, I found six in my yard just today that I had to pick up and...
I mean, that problem's not going away, and I think we need to address that in some way, shape, or form. I watched a guy going down the road the other day, just throwing them out the window from the passenger seat through the passenger's window, just with, you know, reckless abandon, so...
Now, that, that we could probably, you know, I don't know how much preparation we need for that, but I know we have followed up with those companies, sending them letters, and I don't know if it's as...
You know, I think it comes as much down to their delivery method as anything else, because again, if they're just throwing them out a window, they're obviously going to be wherever, which quite often is in the gutters or the storm sewer grates or under packed snow or what have you, so...
And then they can't even be recycled because then they just create trash because...
They're just a nasty...
They're soggy mess.
Yeah. So it's just something to chew on at some point.
Okay. Mr. Schaefer?
Just real quick, I'm glad to see these two things finally come into fruition, the Entrepreneurial Center, which I think is a great opportunity to look at how it would make sense as a step one. Step two, Cohatch and the use of that building, so I'm just glad to see that. I think it's going to be great for the city, especially they have Cohatch right in the heart of downtown. I mean, I'm glad we got there. Hopefully, we'll actually see this thing happen soon, so I think it's real positive.
Okay. Joe DiGinova is going to be honored at the chamber dinner, and he is going to be given the Wayne Hillborn Achievement, Lifetime Achievement Award. I would love to see as many of council can go. It is on February 5th at 6 o'clock, I want to say. So if you all check your calendars, we have the RSVP by tomorrow. Tom and I stopped and talked to Bonnie Tuesday. She was honored, she cried, and she's very excited about it, so I think it'd be really nice if as many of us could go as possible, so please let Elaine know. The Sister City event that went on with Luke Miller, the bicyclist that rode 15,000 miles, this was our first attempt, and we had 87 people there. I was so proud. It was so cold, and it didn't matter, people just showed up, so it went really, really well. Tom and I did a State of the City address for the chamber on Thursday, and on Tuesday we did a semi-version of it to the Realtor Office, so that was kind of fun. And I think that's it. Oh, and I did have a meeting with the Hayes Memorial that's been going on for...
Two years, Jackie?
Uh, yeah, I think so.
Okay.
Yeah. So Jackie covered the first half of the meeting, I covered the second half, and it was only an hour meeting, forget that one out, I don't know. But anyways, I'm going to be meeting with the developers, got block all across the street, and see if we can put it, reflect a thing to put on that corner, so keep it posted. Not meeting us with him is Thursday this week, so I can't go to the other meeting. And that's it. And I look for a motion to adjourn.
So move.
We adjourned at 8:14.